All this meeting to order of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, it's eight thirty. Janet, roll call.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Right.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Dunn?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
You join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, stay standing for the invocation. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to come and offer this invocation this morning. I just want to share a word from the Sermon on the Mount. This then is how you should pray. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread and forgive us our debts as we also have forgiven our debtors, and lead us not into temptation but deliver us from evil. I want to pray in the line of verse eleven that says, give us this day our daily bread. Father, we give you praise for this opportunity to be here, that this nation and county that we live in. My prayer would be, in providing that daily bread means that you are the sustainer, you are the giver, you bless us with understanding, with wisdom, with physical strength, and you give it us the best gift of the Holy Spirit. I would ask that during this meeting today, that this commission would be able to have the boldness, the understanding, the discernment, the wisdom to make the decisions they need to make in order to continue to make Franklin County one of the best counties to raise a family in, to go to school, to go to work. Lord bless this meeting. Through your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Hey, Derek, we have correspondence. Consider donation for West Franklin?
Yes, is that you?
That's Dallas.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners.
I'm Dallas Scott Horn. I'm principal over at Williamsburg Elementary. I'm kind of new there. This is my first year of doing the Veterans Day program, and I learned right before the fact that generally the principal comes over here and asks for some money. So we've already had the program. We had approximately forty veterans and I think we had seventy-five sign up for for the meal. So I'm over here to ask. I think normally it'd been two hundred dollars, whatever, if anything that you could give would be greatly appreciated. And thank you.
And I appreciate him coming over after the fact. This is something, as you know, that we've always done. Sounds like he had another good turnout there. So certainly would encourage you to go ahead and contribute some funding to that. That's a good program.
We have given two hundred, and the majority of the last few years, we did give two hundred and fifty-one year. We haven't given anything the last couple of years. I don't think that they hosted it during COVID, right? So we haven't given since nineteen nineteen because of that reason.
So we can, we could give them two fifty?
It's absolutely up to you guys. You did give them two fifty-one year. In most years, you gave them two hundred.
I would make a motion that we give them two fifty. Things, everything's going up.
A second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer? Chair Dunn?
Yes. Thanks for coming over this morning.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Guess you have to go back to work now.
Deal with little ones.
Is there anything else in correspondence, Derek?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Public comment. Citizens desiring to speak on an item not on agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussing should be limited to matters of county commissioner business and public comments permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Jim Wallace?
Jim Wallace, two four four seven Nebraska Route. I'd like to talk about the commission, commissioners serving on boards. I looked on the website. It shows that there's still commissioners serving on boards, like Mr. Waymeyer's on the hospital board, or at least he was. I'd like to know if, uh, did they disband? Are they still active? Um, I'd like to know who appointed the rest of the members on the R M H board that the county is involved in, and when did this happen? Were they elected or appointed? And how long of a term do the board members serve? And when are their terms up? And Franklin County website also shows a public building commission board, and it says it has not met since August nineteenth, twenty twenty. I was wondering if it was still in effect or if it's disbanded. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Norman Woogie?
Norman Woogie, thirty-seven ninety point zero. I am blessed, so help me God, that you allow me to address this commission. All of our days are numbered. I am blessed that I know you, the commissioners, and their family. I come before you today not to offend you, but to make positive changes and to bring light of things of the shortcomings of this county. Both my wife and I have been in a wheelchair, and when the weather changes, it really affects us. I have some advice. It all pertains to the rule of law. Moreover, and if human rights are violated, noncompliance of the ADA is part of the civil rights of equality. The federal law guarantees of the freedom of speech. The Department of Justice ensures us that that is our right. There are many that are, that are assured that you behave and obey the rules. The first point is, and even in this commission room, the podium is supposed to be ADA. That means a wheelchair can go underneath here. That means that this speaker is supposed to be mobile where they could talk it. There's supposed to be a table in front where they can put their papers. Point two, this room, this room does not have visual assistance. It also is supposed to have hearing devices to ensure the comfort and enjoyment of the meetings. Point three, handicap wheelchairs and walkers are supposed to be available to this meeting place. Our courthouse is not properly ADA compliant. A, the elevator is, does not have equipment for poor vision and blind people. Supposed to be on those buttons where you have for visually handicapped people. There's supposed to be one bell, the rings when it goes up, and two when it's down. I took a tour through the courthouse, and there is only one handicap entrance. The federal law requires that fifty percent of the entrances be ADA compliant. There's four entrances, only one. Two going up and two going down. That's a total of four. Fifty percent of four equals two. That is mandated. And another one needs to be on the west side for the handicap. Maybe Big Brother can encourage you to act properly. The next major issue, there seems to be a little bit of hate about against certain people. To paraphrase the Civil Rights and ADA Section four oh five, Title two and three, it ensures that all people with disabilities that have medical, mental, or physical defects have equal rights and free for full use of all public places. This guarantee's civil rights are passed in nineteen sixty-five, nineteen seventy-three, nineteen ninety, and most recently, many stronger improvements. I have permission from Gene Hurt to explain his disabilities. He has has multiple operations on his feet. Also, Gene, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, has dialysis in a facility here in Ottawa.
About thirty.
He is not a well person. No matter how blunt his presentations are, he should be allowed his peaceful attendance and not be harassed. He has been harassed and pressured to leave at or before the meetings start. One other harassment is that he does not reside in this, at this time in this county. I know, have been told, that some of your employees don't reside in the county. You probably don't give them the same treatment. Gene has been abused. Please don't commit any more atrocities against my friend Gene Hurt. Please go by the rule of law. Each of our ladies will be comfortable and safe and live normal, the life we deserve. I hope this presentation helps you in your future decisions.
Anybody else, Janet? Okay. The agenda for today is considering approval, claim valuers of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, and the minutes for the meeting on November ninth.
Approve.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Okay, Kenny, got some of the rezoning and zoning stuff.
The first request is a request for rezoning, application number twenty-two oh five nineteen seventy for the Altics. This is a request to rezone approximately six point six seven acres from the A one district to the RE Residential Estate District. Just sort of a brief review of this case. This was a larger parcel that actually has two different dwellings already on the single parcel. And so this rezoning request will allow for a six point six seven acre tract to be split off from the larger tract so that each of the dwellings is actually located on separate parcels. So that will actually help bring the property a little bit more into conformance with our regulations, as we don't typically allow multiple dwellings on the same property. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. The Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval on their request.
Any questions? Foul of the motion, see, would be, I make a motion to approve rezoning application number twenty-two oh five dash nineteen seventy, Altic, to rezone approximately six point six seven acres from, from the A one agriculture district to the RE Residential Estate District, and amend the official county's zoning map accordingly.
No move. Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Okay, Kenny.
The second application that I have for you today is a grant of easement for Doris McConnell. This property is located at Reno Road, South Wellsville, just on the east side of Kansas thirty-three highway. This was part of a previous rezoning request that the Board of County Commissioners has already approved. We just missed including the grant of easement at the same meeting that you guys granted the rezoning request. This request would be to grant thirty-five foot of easement across the north portion of the property that would allow for the county to do additional maintenance and other items in the future. I did reach out to the state of Kansas in regards to this, as the west property boundary is, is Kansas thirty-three, and did not receive any response back from the state as to whether they would want any easements granted for, for their right of way. So this one, we went ahead and went forward with just the portion that the county has control over, so.
Okay. Any questions, Kenny, on this? Foul of the motion, be, I make the motion to accept the grant of public road and utility easement from Doris McConnell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Hey, Kenny.
The final item I have is for the board to consider appointing another member to the Planning Commission. As I think many of you are aware, we've been short on the Planning Commission, I think, since I started here. So this will, would actually be the first time that I would have a full Planning Commission if you decide to appoint this additional member. Donna Rison is the individual that has provided a request to be considered as a new Planning Commissioner. I have included in the pack a copy of a letter that she's prepared that discusses some of her background. She has served on other boards with Franklin County as well. I would also note that she is here in attendance if you guys would have any questions for her or would, would like to talk about this application anymore. I'm excited to hopefully have her on the Planning Commission and be able to have a full, full board.
Well, I'd like Donna to come and just say hi.
Yeah, please. Are you in Don's district, Stottemeyer, or?
I'm in Peoria Township.
Yep.
Yeah.
If that helps?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does.
I live at sixty-eight highway and Texas Road, right across from Briale Schoolhouse.
Yeah, sure.
Well, Donna, thanks for sending in this letter to apply for the board. It's always hard to get people to volunteer for voluntary board, so.
Oh, yeah. Everybody's busy. Everybody's busy, so.
You like to ask, Donna?
But I, I remember before zoning and before building codes and being in the architecture business, I've watched a lot of progress, and I wanted to see that continue.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for putting in your application.
Thank you all for being here and serving.
Thanks.
Okay, I'd like to take the motion now. The point, Donna Rison, to the planning board.
We, uh, we approved today. They'll start tomorrow night, right?
Yeah, I got.
Okay. I don't want you to miss out on nothing. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Thank you, Donna, for coming in this morning. And Kenny, see you tomorrow night.
Now get to work.
Okay. Have staff reports now. You want to start us off, Derek?
Yeah, just an update on a couple of projects. You guys approved, I believe that was just last week, moving forward on the tax sale. So just to let you know what our plan is, we're going to send demand letters out and give folks until the end of the year just to pay their back taxes. To the extent we don't get those collected, we will then proceed with the court action at the start of twenty-three. Wellsville ambulance station, we're still working on that. Right now, it is in the city of Wellsville's hands. We put together basically the bones of a couple different agreements and sent it to their council, and they are still mulling that over. So we're waiting to hear back from them. And then, just generally speaking, I'm really happy with where we're at in terms of workforce, you know, and we're doing as well as anybody is in terms of retaining our employees. But we also know that other organizations, you know, they are continuing to modify their pay plans as well. I say all of that to say, we're going to start having retention meetings again. Just, I mean, we've done the increases that we can afford to do, which will go in effect in twenty-three, and that's, it's going to have to tide us over for some time. I think we all know that. But we can continue to explore other retention options and, and other ways that we can continue to improve our culture and make this a great place to work. So just know, we've kind of taken a break on the retention, but we're going to get that started back up in full force, probably at the start of twenty-three, too. That's really all I have today. So thanks, Roy.
I have a quick question. So how many, do you have any idea how many properties that you actually start with for the tax sale? Because it'd be interesting to find out, you start with this money, and how many you actually sell, because how many of them get paid off?
Yeah, I, it varies. As I sit here, I don't, but it's, it's a bunch. I mean, it's seventy, eighty, I think.
Oh, wow.
And then we can, and then a lot of those get paid, but I can absolutely come present that info. That's easy enough to find.
It'd just be interesting to know how many actually pay them off when they get those letters.
Yeah, a significant portion, and that's one of the benefits to using a firm is you, you know, people get a lot of correspondence from Franklin County, and I think a lot of it just goes straight into the recycling. But you get something from Stevenson Brand that catches your attention, and that, it's, that is a very effective tool for us to get those taxes paid. Thanks, Roy.
Kenny, do everything else? Okay, good deal. Paul, do you want to give us an update today? Okay. Anything on the sheriff's office? Okay. That's it. Do you got anything? David, you gotta add something.
So we had our first winter weather event Monday night into Tuesday morning. To get ready for that, we loaded up our salt spreaders Monday afternoon so that we'd be prepared in case we had to go out overnight. Our road and bridge superintendent got out on the roads about two o'clock Tuesday morning to make sure that things were still safe. And then at daylight, we sent our trucks out, and they took care of spreading material on, on all the bridges and intersections on the paved roads to make sure that those were a little safer for the traveling public. Fortunately, the ground temperatures were, were in a state that we didn't get a lot of freezing. So this event was really a non-event for us, which is a good thing. So fortunately, we don't have, at least according to the ten-day forecast that I looked at, we don't have any other snow events coming, but our folks will be ready when the next storm arrives. The other thing I wanted to update you on, we started our Pub Works training, software training on Monday. We've had two really good, really long days of, of training. I, I sit here today more excited about it than, than I was when we first got approved to, to purchase this software. I think it's going to be a, a really, a, a huge thing for the, the department and all of the, all but one of the blade operators, our equipment operators and truck drivers have all been through the mobile training so far. And as of this morning, they are starting to utilize it. So we're, you know, it's far from a complete product and far from, you know, our folks are a long ways from being efficient with it, but they are using it. I heard them on the radio talking about who's in what truck so they could get all that information entered into the program. So even though we don't have, you know, it's not as robust today as it will be, they are still, still working with it, which is, was the goal. So really happy about that. We've got, our shop folks are in training right now, and we've got all day today and all day tomorrow to complete that training. And then there will be, you know, we'll set up internal meetings to, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to ensure that everybody is on the same page, and we will develop kind of best practices with the help of Pub Works, their folks, their implementation people that are here to, to really build that out as we go along. So really excited about it. I think it's going to be a great tool, and we're off, off to the races on it. That's all I have.
I.
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry. One other thing. Dustin has been amazing helping us get, get all of the, the devices set up and helping to make sure that we're set up to be, we did the training the last two days in here. We couldn't have done it without him and his staff. They, they've been super to work with in helping us get this off the ground. Thank you.
Yeah, I, and I would chime in on that, too. I, I don't know that enough mindfulness is paid to, to what this transition is going to entail. You think about our equipment operators. I mean, these guys, so many of them have showed up to work for years, and they've done their job a certain way, and now they're being asked to implement a new piece of technology. It's not easy for them. And, and so I commend them for doing it. We know the transition is going to be hard, but, but they deserve special recognition for doing that. I would also say that, that David deserves recognition because it's not easy to get buy-in for things like that. And, and I'm not an authoritarian. I don't tell my people, you are going to do this, and I don't hire authoritarians. David doesn't just, his people aren't doing it because he has told them, you're doing this, or you're, he inspires them to want to do it, which is great. Like, that, that's how we like to lead. But I commend David, certainly commend Dustin. He's, he's got a lot on his plate, not only now, but for all of twenty-two, and then, or twenty-three, I'm sorry, and then the line-level staff, who have to be the boots on the ground for this implementation. Right now, it's rolling out in public works, but soon it'll be the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, HR, planning and zoning. I mean, most all of our departments are going to have a role to play here, and certainly we're going to be talking about that and recognizing them as we roll through twenty-three.
Thank you, Derek. One other thing, as we were handing out, you know, as they showed up to the training, we were handing out the devices. One of my employees has never been on the internet, has never worked with a Word document or any, any technology at all, say, or is, and I think he's got a flip phone. And he took that and jumped right in and, and with a great attitude, and started asking good questions and, and trying to get it figured out. And I know he's out there today, struggling with it probably, but he's working with it and, and trying to utilize it the way that it's intended to. And he's going to do that every day along with all the other employees. They're going to, they're going to plug away at this until they get up to the level that, that they feel comfortable with it.
And I'm sorry, David and I keep volleying this back and forth, but I want to commend the five of you as well. For eight years now, and, and it's, it's a work in progress. We'll never, there's not a destination. It, it's, it's the process that we will continue to work through. But you've been a good board to work for. You've indulged us. You've allowed us to do so many things, not just with our pay plan, but things we've done to improve our culture. And this is what practically you see from that. You see employees who want to do right by the organization. They want to challenge themselves and put themselves in uncomfortable situations. And they do it because they, I think, in, to some degree, because they, they feel appreciated by the organization. They want to bring their best every day. They want to bring their best every day, so I appreciate the five of you and you continuing to work with us and make this a better, better organization.
You didn't have any problem getting any of those devices? With the supply chain, you would, you know, so that's awesome. You got them all?
Dustin worked this.
And timely and?
I think on seventeen of the twenty-seven iPads, you approved on a Wednesday, I had them in my hands on Thursday.
Oh, my. Okay. That's awesome.
Yeah. And they installed all the software and did all of that for us, so, uh, really very few hiccups to begin the training.
Cool.
Just a couple of things. Um, the canvas will be held after this meeting. Um, we were tentatively planning for nine-thirty, so it looks like we're gonna be able to make that, so if you guys, after this meeting, want to head down to the courthouse, we'll be on the second floor. Um, my office staff's getting everything set up, so we, we'll be ready to get rolling. Um, and, uh, a note on the Sheriff's Department, since Sheriff Richards isn't here, and we took care of that invoice with, um, for the new van, for their new transport van, um, on this last pay cycle that went out yesterday, and, um, they are going to be picking that vehicle up, so that is all done, and we took care of that with ARPA funds as you guys approved, so.
Missus, Tom?
Uh, and that's for meetings, kind of give you a little update what the RCD is doing. Uh, we delivered twenty bikes last week for kids starting a Christmas program, and, uh, we delivered a thousand pounds of deer venison meat throughout the sixth county area, which is just the beginning of the season. We actually worked through, uh, our biggest share comes out of Mount City, and, uh, they actually told me last week they did eighty-one deer, and just down there alone. We got thirteen of them through the, through the donation process. Uh, we're also working with the Eagles. Uh, this weekend, they're doing a toy run, and we donate stuff to that and toys and so forth and helping with the toy run. And tomorrow, we're gonna call, I, be going over, we're, it's a sponsored economic development deal we're doing. We're going to Osage County. We've been moving around each quarter to a different, so tomorrow we'll be going over to Osage County and, and meeting with the other Economic Development Director just to talk over what's happening in their community, so that's all I got.
I don't have anything, Ron. On you?
I was at part of the Chamber Board meeting yesterday, um, um, delivered our report and then they were talking about, um, the lighting of the marriage Christmas tree, um, which will be the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and then immediately after that will be the, um, Christmas parade sponsored by Main Street. And the reason I didn't make the second half of the meeting is because I was on my way to Burlington. We, uh, met with the fourth Judicial District Nominating Committee and we chose a new magistrate judge for, um, Coffee County. We had four, uh, interviews and we ended up choosing a lady, her name is Kara Reynolds. She worked, um, for several years in the court system in Coffee County and also six years, I think, in Anderson County. Um, so she will be starting in, probably by, before the end of the year, and I think all the judges are excited about that, 'cause that will, 'cause all the judges are going down to Coffee County, so when they have their own, then we don't have to do so much of that. Um, the city of Ottawa at their, um, study session on Monday, uh, began a discussion of a water rate hike, I think, which is just the beginning of, in their utilities, I think they're looking at, uh, possibly hikes across the board, water sewer and electric, but, um, they're starting with the water rate hike, so the cost of everything's going up and you have a limited amount of customers, and expenses go up, and hike, um, rate hikes probably are in the future, so I think that's all I have.
No, really, I don't. I'm not on the hospital board, I never have been. I saw the page in question, uh, it's at least five years old, it's clearly an old, old page, there's county commissioners on there that haven't been here for four years, so.
And is that, uh, because I made a note on that, is that on our website?
On our website, but I mean, it's obvious it's an old posting, but.
Yeah, well, I guess Dustin left, but we'll, we'll try and get that all cleaned up, yeah.
Used to go and watch the meetings, kind of report back, but like I said, that was at least five years ago that one was on there, so.
Right.
Always been the, we've been a representative, but, I mean, like, we haven't been a, on the board, but just go to report back.
Yeah, kind of like a liaison, go, listen, just be present, but, no, we don't have any control, we don't, we're not board members, that's all, little control we have over the operation.
We have no voting.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I, I gave this presentation here several weeks ago, but by law, you have to appoint a board, and, and now that, and that is an operations board, so by law, you, the five of you cannot govern the operations of the hospital. People here, county-owned hospital, and they're inclined to think that the five of you are responsible for making national decisions. You literally cannot make those decisions. You appoint the board, which was known as the ransom board, and they are tasked with the operations, and they by law can, can contract out those services, which they did with Advent Health, that was all legal, but you, the five of you have nothing to do with that, and, and you know that, so.
I didn't want to restart anything, I just, it was said, it's not true.
No, I just, I, I would just like to express my frustration that if you have questions, then stay around till the end of the meeting so that somebody can answer your questions, because when you walk out, there's, anyway. That's it.
Okay. I might say just a couple of things about the software program. It was a long time coming and it wouldn't happen in the first place if we didn't have, uh, department heads and elected officials on board to pretty much implement and direct the, uh, the training. I know it's gonna be extensive and long, uh, duration getting the training done, like David said, he's getting started with it, but it's gonna take a long time to implement this software, so, uh, as chairman of the board, I appreciate that, uh, the software now has been implemented and everybody's on board with it. Thanks, Derek, for, you know, kind of ramrodding that. I just, uh, went to the ECAN, uh, board meeting and it was basically training on Edstart and, uh, early Edstart, required by, uh, federal law that we have, uh, agencies that do that have to do this training annually, so that's mainly what we did, uh, for ECAN. Just another reminder, uh, when we leave here, we're gonna do the canvas down at the courthouse, everybody's welcome to be there if they want to be there, and, uh, that's all I have, so unentertained emotions. No move. Word done.